All right, board members, let's go ahead because this is going to be a quite lengthy, I think, and I hope, because I think this is a very important topic work session. First of all, before we get into that, let me just say something that I may have shared with one or two of you. Every time we have a vice chair election, the chair has to rearrange seating. This is totally off-topic, ladies, so forgive me. A little bit of housekeeping here. And I started to do it today in my mind's eye and move this person here and this person there. And then I thought, you know, I sort of hope this becomes a tradition on this board rather than me do it arbitrarily and I don't want to give you the wrong idea. I think it's still going to be up to the chair. I thought it's really, in some ways, in part, should be based on seniority. So what I'm going to do after this meeting ends is, starting from most senior to most junior, I'm going to ask you if you'd like to move and if so, you know, where you'd like to move. So if you're most junior, I may get to you and there may be no options, but so I'm going to start with Mrs. Gordon. I think she's most senior and ask her first. I'm going to go, I think Ms. Cadel, you're next, and I believe Ms. Flynn, I think you're would be next. I don't know, I have a list in here of the order. Then it's going to be Mrs. Robinson and Ms. Moore. So, you know, I think it'll work out well, but I'm not going to tell you what it's going to be after that, but then I can take your input and figure out where to put you. I just thought that was a fair way to do it than me just arbitrarily deciding. And there should be some benefit for having served for a while on the board. So let's do that. And without further ado, let's go into this work session. Before I turn it over to Dr. Jenkins, I do want to thank Ms. Watson and the Winter Park Health Foundation for doing this for Orange County Public Schools. I also want to thank the Orange County Health Department for being here today, and I also want to thank our hospital partners as well for being part of this effort. This is a very important issue to this board. It's part of our philanthropic strategic plan. And board members, I know it's been, gosh, over a year and a half since we circled back to this issue, maybe even two years, but as you know, the more we talked about this issue of nurses in our schools, the more different avenues that were opened up to us and alleyways and streets and different directions that we could go in. And I'm not sure yet where we're going to end up on this, but as everything we do in education, I've learned in my six years on the board, we try to do it with validated data and with a, with a, an objective way of going about it. And to me, this is the start of that effort, not the end of it. But it really starts with this well-commissioned study that the Winter Park Health Foundation did for us along with some of our partners and spent a fair amount of money doing it for us. So thank you, Ms. Watson, very, very much for everything the Winter Park Health Foundation does for us.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I might also clarify, because I saw a look of confusion on that end of the dice down there. The newly-elected vice chair won't have much of a choice. Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let me, I should have made that clear, I'm so sorry. Yes, the vice chair will always be in this seat, but after that, everybody's movable.
Got it.
So let me know you have no choice. There are two seats that are immutable. Forgive me. Yeah. Yeah, this seat doesn't move either.
That's why. Moving on. As a chairman, see what we started, see what we start. We have, for some time, been waiting on this report. If you will recall, we had a very generous offer to do a study around school nurses. Ms. Pedraza is at the table because it was one of the main agenda items for our philanthropic strategic plan, if you recall. Vicky Cartwright, Dr. Cartwright is certainly the one who supervises that area for our district, and Deb Watson was part of the lead organization that helped to finance and pull together the report. And so it is extensive, but as late as this week, we heard some encouraging news that I can't wait for Debbie to announce to the group. Let's just go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And that's, okay, I wanted to make sure the microphone was on. Yes, we're very excited to present the findings of this study to you. And I'd like to start by providing a little bit of context, just to make sure we understand where we started and how we got to this point. As has been mentioned, the initiative to ensure we have a licensed nurse in every school is part of our philanthropic strategic plan. The priorities are to ensure that we have at least an LPN in every elementary school and at least an RN, if not a nurse practitioner, in every middle or high school. And it has several goals, as you see on the screen. Having a licensed medical professional ensures that we reduce absenteeism and improve student performance and support student health as well as school health. That's something that's very important. Our children cannot succeed in school if they are not in school. So that is an important goal of this initiative. In January of 2014, we convened a meeting that was hosted by Winter Park Health Foundation with a number of our current and prospective partners to discuss this specific initiative and how we might move forward with it. Out of that meeting came the opportunity to commission this study and take a look at not just school nurses, which are an important part of it, but also how might we provide a full continuum of care for the children in our community rather than simply the episodic care that may come with a licensed medical professional in a school? What were the best practices across the state? What's working elsewhere and how might we look at that and consider additional opportunities for our entire community? The details of what the study would contain are on the screen for you. And as I said, we wanted to take a look at not just what the best practices are, but also what's our current state here in Orange County? What are other practices and services across the state that we could identify? What might be out-of-the-box solutions or creative innovative ideas we hadn't yet encountered or tried? And look at opportunities for recommendations and next steps. So school nurses are where we start. I don't think there's any question that that is still important, but this study is very much about what do we do in addition? How do we look at a larger, bigger, more comprehensive solution? You can see on the screen, we actually have three slides here, so I'll flip through them as I speak, but these are the folks who came out to that meeting in January of 2014. You can see that our community was well-represented. Our partners in the hospital arena in particular, Winter Park Health Foundation, Signa Healthcare joined us as well. We also had the Florida Department of Health represented, and the school board members were there also, as well as staff from the district. And since that time, we have had an opportunity to talk in more depth about this initiative and the fact that the study was ongoing with West Orange Healthcare District, both their current and former leadership. With Orlando Health, we've had some follow-up conversations, and we've had some very creative support from Andrea Ellisque, who helped us work with several medical groups who were willing to step up and help with providing a nurse at Rosemont Elementary. But this study is critical, and the findings of this study are critical for us to be able to move forward with this initiative. Many of our partners and prospective partners have been eager to hear what this study uncovers and how we can all work together to solve this problem and find solutions. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie Watson to continue on. Oh, I'm, sorry, to Vicky.
Good evening, board. One of the first things that we wanted to point out is that recently, there has been a change, as recent as May in 2016, the recommendations from the National Association of School Nurses. Originally, they had decided that there was a specific ratio of one nurse to 750 healthy student population. How, and as you can see, they also went ahead and had other recommendations for those special populations that would be beyond your normal, healthy child. From there, what they have done at this point in time is their most recent recommendation is that there should be a minimum of one full-time nurse in every school. And the reason that they recognize this is that they state that for our nurses, that they recognize they are, they have a very specialized practice and that they are key individuals to ensuring that students have that continuity of academic exposure. They also facilitating in the normal development process for students as they're growing. And they're also the individuals that can advance, as I was saying, with advancing academic success, student health, and they can also bridge a lot of that healthcare initiatives that needs to occur between the home, between the medical office, maybe the doctor's office, as well as what may occur at school. And so these are different systems that have been put into place and that they recognize that the school nurse is the key individuals that can provide towards these needs. From the 2013-14 school year, and the reason the year is dated is because that is the most recent information that was available. In the state of Florida, where they had one nurse per, for each child, what they were looking at is the ratio. So for one nurse per 2,214 children is the state average. And so that would equate to about one nurse for every approximately three schools. In Orange County Public Schools, that ratio is higher. So we do have one nurse, and that would be a registered nurse, an RN, per every 3,836 children with a ratio of approximately one nurse for every 4.7 schools. We give you those ratios because it gives you a premise as to the need that we have within Orange County Public Schools, and it just starts that conversation as to where we are. One things, I, some of the things that we did want to make sure that we take time prior to turning this over to Debbie Watson is to really talk about our appreciation, because it's without these sponsorships that we would not have been able to pursue this study. And so we wanted to make sure that we recognize Winter Park Health Foundation as well as Florida Hospital, because they are the ones who monetarily sponsored the study. Additionally, for Winter Park Health Foundation, because they manage the consultant as well as the process for the study and of whom we have been in ongoing conversations over the past couple of years as the study has been conducted. Tonight in our audience, we also have some individuals I want to make sure that we recognize because they took time out of their schedule to come and listen to this presentation, and we are truly appreciative of them because they also support this initiative, and they're very strategic and very important to Orange County Public Schools. And this would be Kevin Sharon, and that he is from the Florida Department of Health in Orange County. We also have J.B. Boonstra from Florida Hospital, also Martha Centori from Nemours, and Rosanna Flores from Orlando Health. So I wanted to take time to say thank you for those individuals who are here this evening. Now, at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Watson.
Let me interrupt on behalf of the board as well. Thank you for being here tonight and for participating in this effort.
Chairman. I'm sorry, some board members would love to see those individuals stand up so they know who Dr. Cartwright's recognizing. If you'll.
Run that list one more time.
Absolutely. Kevin Sharon. J.B. Boonstra from Florida Hospital. Martha Centori from Nemours. And Rosanna Flores from Orlando Health.
All right, well, I am very excited that today has finally arrived, and we have this time to share and discuss the results of the study. But before we jump in and proceed with the actual data and information and recommendations, I did want to pay special attention, as you have mentioned, to my colleague from Florida Hospital, J.B., who is here tonight representing Mike Griffin and Yumil Luna, who have been very engaged in school health as well as the Winter Park Health Foundation. It was four years ago that Florida Hospital stepped up and funded a nurse practitioner based at Edgewater High School. So, yeah, so that was something we were very excited about. And I would be amiss if I did not recognize my colleague Sarah Stack, who is seated right here behind me. Sarah is a longtime consultant to the Winter Park Health Foundation and a leader in many community health planning efforts. Some of you remember her from days when she was with the Healthy Community Initiative Organization here in Orlando, and she has been an advocate for community health ever since. Sarah worked directly with the researcher that we commissioned for this study, and she actually was very involved in the data gathering effort and vetting out a lot of the data and was primarily responsible for the analysis and the preparation of the recommendation section. And I would say that she is actually the editor of the final report, which will be turned over to the district, which contains all of the background for the data that you're going to see here today, all of the references, all of the contacts, and everybody that we spoke to through the year and a half of putting together this, this study. So I want to personally say thank you to Sarah, and if there are questions when we get into that portion of it, you'll probably see me turn to Sarah quite a bit because her computer is filled with all sorts of information and data. As many of you know, the Winter Park Health Foundation, whom I'm fortunate enough to work with and have worked with since its inception in 1994, has been a longtime supporter of school-based health and wellness services. We have a very robust partnership with the 12 schools that serve students and their families from the towns of Winter Park, Maitland, and Eatonville, which is where the Winter Park Health Foundation focuses its efforts, its resources. And we work very closely with the principals and the leadership of those 12, 12 schools, the area soup's, and the school board members that represent those schools. We invest almost $100,000 per school to assist those schools in upgrading to nurses, to either LPNs or RNs, to also provide for nurse practitioners that staff to school-based health centers. We've worked with Nemours to bring a federally qualified health center into Chaney Elementary to actually have a wellness cottage there to provide primary care services for the students, the staff, and the families in the surrounding community. And then we invest heavily, as I said, in the mental health programs. We work to implement the wellness programs and the creation of the healthy school teams that are now part of the district wellness policy. And so this has been a 20-year love affair between us and Orange County Public Schools, all dedicated to this partnership where we are focused on improving the health of children and youth, where we work, it's a real win-win relationship, where we work together with the schools who are looking to address those barriers and those issues that impede learning. So I come to this honestly, you know, with a, with a strong passion for addressing the health needs of our children. One of the things that became evident to, to us and that group that Debbie shared with you that met a couple of years ago is that while the, the Winter Park Health Foundation is very unique, we, we are a funder dedicated to a very small area of Orange County. We are very committed to children and youth and the health of children and youth. Most funders have a much broader area, private funders, and they focus on more than just health. We are focused solely on health and wellness in a very small area. So we are able to take a very deep dive and invest almost $1 million a year in children and youths' health and the school initiatives. But we are unique, and there is not that opportunity for philanthropy for the rest of the district, you know, to, to acquire that much philanthropy. So it became, we all said, when we gathered together the hospitals, the other potential funders, we said we need to look at other solutions that take us beyond just philanthropy to real business strategies and financial strategies, reimbursement. And that's what you're going to see here today, is we, we took a look at the other districts, what's happening with the other top seven districts or the other top six, the big seven in Florida. We looked at what are they doing? We looked at other best practices around the state. We didn't go too far beyond the state in our, in our survey of the landscape, because we know that Florida is unique and that we don't have a state income tax. The states where you find nurses in every school, like in the state of Massachusetts, you know, they have taxes that help underwrite that. So we stayed close to home and really tried to look at reality with this study. So let's just jump in and let's take a look. First of all, let's set the stage here for what are the needs? And I think Dr. Cartwright or Debbie mentioned the, some of the data, we have a lag time in data. Most of what we'll be looking at here is the school year of 1314 data, because 1516 data was just submitted in September to the, to the state, to the Department of Health, and won't be issued back out to all of us until the springtime of '17. So we can add to this report the most recent data and see if there are any other trends, but primarily, we focused on the most recent data when we put this together, which was the school year 1314. And sometimes we look back a little bit so that we could do some trending. But for the school years of really looking at 1112 through 1415, we have noted in looking at the data here in Orange County, and this is Orange County, again, taking a look at the data that comes out of Tallahassee, there has been a steady increase in students with chronic disease conditions. It's pretty amazing what kids in our schools are dealing with and what families are dealing with and what they're really depending upon the schools for assistance to address. The needs are just getting more and more complex for, for children. So it's requiring more skilled care in the schools. Asthma is, always seems to be on the uptick. We've noticed that significantly at a couple of the schools that we serve specifically in the Winter Park area. And there is an increasing need for education and management, self-management of these This slide just gives you kind of an overview for the school year 1415, some of the number of the conditions reported and shows you basically that everything is up when you compare it to the year before. The only thing really that was down was a reporting of allergies, and who knows? That could have been that it was a good year or, or, you know, for allergies. You know, there, that is the only thing that was down, everything else was up. And you can see down there under all others, some of the really serious conditions that, that our children are dealing with. Everything from psychiatric disorders and seizures to kidney disease and cardiac conditions. So we relied on the Health Services Department, Linda Langa and John Zaraga and others, and Dr. Cartwright, of course, to come up with the criteria for, and this is something that Debbie had, had asked when the agenda, when the priority was determined to put nurses in all the schools or strive to have a nurse in every school, to determine kind of the starting point, you know? And so this is the criteria that the district developed, that critical, substantial, and moderate, based on really clinic volume. And this shows you the number of schools that the district staff and folks determined were in that critical, critical area of in need of a nurse, substantial and moderate. So we have 35 schools that are in that critical need category, 51 schools with substantial needs, and 30 schools with moderate needs. Now, this does not take into consideration those schools that are already staffed with an RN or with a nurse, because they are considered to be special schools, you know, they have some sort of underlying health condition where they have a special center for that. All right, we're going to take a look here at the, this is directly the information that we feed up or the district feeds through the Health Department up to Tallahassee. So the data source here is the Florida Department of Health, but all the data has come from the local level, from the multiple community partners and the district submitting the data to, to Tallahassee. So you will see that in 1314 and in comparison with 1415, the number of health services provided per student was pretty much the same. It was right at a little, little over 11 different type of health services were provided to each student during those school years, each of those school years. The total daily health room visits per student, you see listed there, you've got a difference there between, was it right around five that were between 1314 and 1415? And then it breaks down even further into the daily medication doses administered and the number of health room visits. In 1314, there were about 5,000 health room visits, and then there was an upswing in 1415 to 6,516 per student. Then the total daily medication doses administered, little over 1,500, and then a decrease down to 1,300. So bringing the totals, okay, that was on a daily basis, bringing the totals to, and these figures are just astronomical, but I know in our 12 schools, we're dealing with 40,000 to 45,000 health room visits a year in our 12 schools, so these numbers do not surprise me at all. Total annual health room visits, 1314, 925,000 plus, and then in 1415, it was 1.17 million visits to the health rooms. So the, our nurses and our basic school health aides are busy. They are very, very busy people. The annual medication doses administered actually went down in comparing these two years, but for 1314, it was 284,000 doses of medication, and the following year, it was right at about 244,000 doses of medication that were administered. And some of those are pretty complex meds. So that's activity. So now we'll take a look at the actual expenditures, and this is expenditures in Orange County. So then this number includes all of your OCPS schools, your basic, your comp, your full-service schools, everything are included in this. It accounts for 225 schools in 1314, and I, one of the things I wanted to clarify is when we went to 1415, it was only one additional school, 226 schools. So you see here that our average annual per-student expenditure was $41.87 in 1314 and then dropped down to $39.31 in 1415. The total, which is on our next slide, was actually 7.83 million, and then it slipped down to 7.53 million. The decrease was in part due to some loss, loss of revenue from the tobacco funds, so a little bit less funding from the state level. Some of that was offset by an increase in funding from general revenue, and the other part was that it was a decrease in funding from community partners. Some of the community partners just were not in a position to provide as much financial support or services the following year. Community partners, this is for the 1314 school year. These community partners provided over 1.8 million to support school-based health services in Orange County, primarily the nursing. For instance, our $500,000, $600,000 that goes towards the CHIL mental health counseling program that we have in our schools is not included in this. So this is specifically for nursing, nurse practitioners, LPNs. For the year 1314, it was 1.8 million for funding school health programs or services in Orange County, and this represented 23% of that total funding for that school year. So this is either some of the, obviously, government funds that are funding through the Department of Health, some of the government funds through Orange County and the Citizens' Commission for Children, but private philanthropy, more or less, coming from the hospitals and from the foundation. So a mixture there of two different funding sources. So that's a little bit of background on the need and the amount of dollars and funds that are currently being, or were, have been invested in school health services. It's amazing, Orange County is well-respected for what we are doing here for, with so little in terms of the, the dollars. Dr. Sharon is always quick to say that our county is the, and he said it, first thing he said to me tonight when I saw him, is that we are the most underfunded large county in Florida for public health services, which includes school health. But, but we do amazing things in Orange County. I mean, the collaboration with partners, the staff, the basic school health aides who are so passionate about school health and wellness but are working, you saw those numbers working, you know, so hard just to keep up with the pace with limited expertise and time. We're still doing great things. We consistently exceed the state, state standards for vision and hearing screenings. We also have received the Florida Healthy District, we, we've received an award since the inception of that program. When it started seven years ago, we were one of the first silver districts. There were no gold districts initially. And then we became a gold district in the next round and have maintained that gold status for two rounds of recognition, and we'll be going for a third gold recognition with the state of Florida. So we are a highly-regarded district for what we do, especially in the area, I think, of wellness. We're very We're very well-known. We have the most aggressive wellness policy in comparison with the rest of the state, and the implementation of the healthy school teams here in Orange County served as a model for what the state is now mandated for all schools. So any school that participates in the school lunch program now through the Florida Department of Agriculture has to have a healthy school team, and that all started right here, right here in you guys who voted that in. So kudos to us. And we have more community partners collaborating on health and wellness than any other district, even those large districts. But when you take a look at the county reports and you look at the list of school partners, it's all on public record, we have more folks listed as community collaborators on our health and wellness and homeless initiatives than any other district. So we're doing a lot of good work. This conversation is just about how can we do more. Wanted to share with you an overview, because I'm always asked, about what do we do? Because some folks have talked about the Winter Park Consortium, the feeder pattern of those twelve schools, eight elementary, two middle, ninth grade center, and the high school there in Winter Park, those twelve thousand kids that matriculate through those schools. We've been doing it so long, people will quite often say, so, so what does it take to do what you do? And this, again, is just going to be comparing on the nursing portion of it, not on the mental health side. So we've taken out that six hundred thousand dollars. So if you look on the left side, you will see the annual expenditure per student and where the funding sources came from, from the school district, from the Health Department, other partners. The annual expenditure per student for health services was forty-one, meaning nursing services, okay, nursing, nurse practitioner, LPN, RN, basic school health aide, was forty-one dollars and four cents, okay, per student. Also over here, the Winter Park Health Foundation model, if you will, district funding, because what we do with our schools is we help them upgrade from the basic school health aide, which is something that is put into their budget line item through the district. We go to the schools and we help them upgrade to an LPN mostly in the elementary schools and an RN in the, in the secondary schools. So the district contribution is there, the, for the basic school health aide, the individual school's contribution is there for them finding the additional funds to upgrade, and then the Winter Park Health Foundation dollars. So you see, we end up with an annual expenditure per student of fifty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. So, you know, a gap there, right around fourteen dollars is the difference. So just, just as a matter of information. And this is a little bit of what happens when you invest a little more, when you take just one, one indicator and you take a look at, something I know that is very important to the schools and to teachers is returning those kids who do not need to be sent home, okay? That, you know, when you have a nurse who can truly assess whether or not this is serious enough for the student to be sent home, quite often with the basic school health aide, they have to err on the side of, gee, well, maybe we better send the child home. So the school health assistant is the first category that's listed there. This is comparing, and the, in the, the orange there is Winter Park Consortium, orange for Wildcats, I guess. OCPS is in the purple. So seventy-seven percent of the time, your school health attendants are returning kids back to the classroom. It's not applicable within the Winter Park Consortium schools because all of our schools are upgrading to some sort of certified nurse. LPN, in our instance, they are returning kids to class at least ninety percent of the time. Usually for us, that's somewhere in the area of ninety-two to ninety-four percent of the time, as compared to eighty-seven percent of the time. RNs, that's really where we need to focus, because you can see the big difference there. And again, this year must have been a really year when the kids were sicker, because ninety-five point seven percent for us is somewhat low. You know, normally, we're upwards of ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of the time, our, our RNs in our consortium area are returning kids to class. So that means less interruption of classroom time, obviously less interruption for the parents who are having to come to school to pick up their child, or quite often, the child ends up staying in the clinic or the health room throughout the day. So big differences there. So that's just really talking about the case for support. So now let's turn to what's happening around the state and some of the results of, you know, taking a look at our status in comparison with some of the other districts. This is going back to the need, and one of the things we looked at is the number of uninsured children. And this is a report that actually, it's a brief that was commissioned by the Florida Philanthropic Network through Georgetown, and it's all about children's health coverage and children's being insured in the state of Florida. So for the calendar year fourteen, we had more uninsured, our percentage of children without some form of health coverage was the highest of any of our cohort, I guess, you know, our, our other competitive districts. So we may have, you know, obviously Miami Dade, sixty-four thousand uninsured kids, they had a much greater number, and they were right at about the same. So we're, we're on a parallel pretty much with Miami, Broward, Palm Beach, and Orange. So, and who knows? Don't even begin to ask me what's going to happen to this figure now with the election and all of the discussion about, you know, the Affordable Care Act, but we're, we're all on pins and needles trying to figure out, you know, if we're going to be dealing with another crisis if Obamacare is truly repealed, you know, in terms of the number of kids, the number of families, number of people, you know, that, that are going to have issues related to access, so. School health expenditures, this was that forty-one dollar and change number that we talked about earlier in terms of Orange County's annual expenditure per student is an average of forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. If you look at this in comparison, and I'm going to tell you a little bit later why Palm Beach is so high, and some of you probably already know, but if you look at the comparison, you see Miami Dade and Hillsborough are ahead of us, and then Pinellas, Duval, and Broward are below. And then, just for the heck of it, we threw in a couple, our neighboring districts there so you can see what they are investing in, in school nurses and, and health services. And then Alachua and Brevard were put in because they're going to, we're going to show you later that they're doing some unique things in those two counties. So revenue sources, and this is an area that we've been talking to the district a great deal about, talking to Dr. Cartwright and, and the team, is the opportunity that exists to maximize some of the reimbursement sources that are out there that come through, let's, first of all, through Medicaid. And this is the certified Medicaid match reimbursement. And just to explain what that is, is it's where a district is allowed to provide health services such as speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, behavioral support, nursing services, for instance, for complex meds, complex medication administration and treatment, and then transportation services, for those students that are qualified Medicaid-eligible students, okay? So you actually can bill for reimbursement for services for those students that are Medicaid, qualified Medicaid-eligible and are in need of those services that I just mentioned. And those monies can, are, come back to the district, to general revenue generally, but they are then, the idea is to put those back into school health services. So this just looks at the 2013 calendar year, and you're going to see later, because we've had time since we first published this, to actually gather the fourteen and the, and fifteen, I believe, data, or at least the last I saw, you had through quarter three.
That's actually total.
Okay. Data. And so things are trending upward, that's the good news. And since, I know since I first shared some of this information with a preview to the superintendent and the chairman, the superintendent jumped right on this, and, and things have already seen an uptick, you know, in terms of seeking the reimbursement, so. But it's difficult. You know, there's nothing easy about reimbursement. As I described, the number of services that are being provided in these clinics, you know, to bill is yet a whole nother procedure, you know, that has to be done. So, and you've got nurses and staff who are passionate about serving the needs of the student, and then they have that administrative function. You have to really tool up to be able to make it easy for them to, to, to also do that administrative function associated with being able to seek that reimbursement. So it's, it's not that easy, so. This is the administrative side of the, of what I just described. This is basically for the expenses that aren't covered in the Medicaid Match reimbursement program. For instance, referrals for eligibility determination, any sort of INR, coordination of services, billing, and definitely, this has been trending up. And this is based on units of time spent doing this sort of, these sort of administrative functions. So this is another pot or revenue stream or area where we can receive funding through the federal government down to the state. And in fact, if you want to take a little retrospective here, you've got two thousand nine, ten school year through here, the latest data that we had was through quarter three for the fifteen, sixteen school year. So you can see that reimbursement for all services is definitely trending upwards, and the staff is doing a great job of, of bringing more and more dollars in to be able to support school health services. We also took a look at school health staff salaries because we felt that this was important to take a look, because sometimes there are issues related to retention and especially in those lower-paid positions. And then there are also challenges with recruitment. We all hear about the nursing shortages and the fact that it isn't just, you know, if we're going to go into this, you know, effort to really have a nurse in every school, we're going to find ourselves competitive with the nurses, with the hospitals and home health agencies and others. So I think it is, you know, just for a matter of information here, that we are going to have to take a serious look at how much we are, we are paying these professionals to make sure that we get the highest quality folks and experienced folks to be able to, and, and school nursing is tricky. You know, it's not like a nice controlled office or even on a unit in a hospital. You know, you're, you're seeing sixty to a hundred kids a day, you know, in and out of a clinic. So, you know, granted, you may only work ten, ten, you know, months out of the year and you're off during the summer, so, you know, a lot of people are attracted to it for that purpose, but it's tough work. It's very tough work. So just something for us to, to take note of there as we look to expand and add additional staff. So now we're going to take a look at the, the next section, and again, there's much deeper information in, in the actual report, which we'll be turning over to Dr. Cartwright and to Debbie, is what's happening around the state? What are some of the best practices? Who should we go to talk to a little bit more? Who should we, you know, go visit? You know, who should we, you know, take a look at their models to try and have some ideas from? So I mentioned Alachua County, and Alachua, of course, is not one of our cohort, per se, but they have done a great job of, of expanding, they only have, they're almost all RNs in Alachua County, and they're, they're spending forty-three dollars per student, but they have an ad valorem tax. And that tax supports school health services. So it is a dedicated funding source through, that the voters, through referendum, that is available. They also use Medicaid administrative claim and outreach funding, and like I said, they, they have an RN in all of their secondary schools and an LPN in the elementary schools. Brevard is doing things a little bit differently. Our neighbors in Brevard County have pretty much turned their entire school nursing program over to the Department of Health. So they are not employing the school nurses, they actually have turned to the Department of Health to manage the school health program. And the Department of Health over there analyzes the level of need at each school and staffs it accordingly. The staff don't find themselves, you know, having to do some of the other responsibilities of within the school, they're dedicated simply to the health room because they're actually somebody else's employee, they're focused on the health of the students. And because of being part of the Department of Health, they have a very well-oiled machine as it relates to the Medicaid billing structure, because the DOH over there, the Department of Health over there, is billing for community health services as well. Over in Hillsborough, they have contracted with an outside organization to handle their billing, and they are aggressively billing, and their goal has been to reduce the number of health aides, which they're using certified nursing assistants, to increase the number of nurses in every school. And you see now that they have a hundred and three RNs, or as of this report, a hundred and three RNs and a hundred and forty-five LPNs. And again, they're going with RNs, sometimes LPNs, but primarily RNs at the high school level and LPNs at middle school, and sometimes RNs or primarily LPNs at the elementary school. They're phasing out those fifty-four and probably have by now, a good number of those. Miami Dade, every, a lot of people have heard, you know, about the Children's Trust in Miami Dade. Again, it was a, a children's tax, Children's Services Council, per se, that is, goes by the name of the Children's Trust. Dave Lawrence was the big champion for that down in Miami Dade County. And it is, it provides a dedicated funding source for school health through, through this voter-approved referendum. Their program is called Health Connect, and they provide comprehensive physical and mental health services, health navigators, nurses, home visits for new and teen mothers. It is a fantastic program that they have. They are working very closely with their federally qualified health centers. They actually contract out to many of the FQHCs that serve Miami Dade County to provide those services. So they have a variety of different contractors that are working under the Children's Trust umbrella to provide services. So it only takes money. Orange County, we are relying on funding from the district and the principal's annual budget. We have our lead RNs, we are, we are focused on the RNs at the learning community level. Each of them have approximately thirty-six assigned schools, and then we contract with agencies for substitute nurses and those one-on-one nursing assignments for students with complex needs. But you see our staffing breakdown there, we currently have, or as of this report, had thirty-six RNs, five lead RNs for the learning communities, sixty-six LPNs, and a hundred and six health aides, which are those basic school health attendants. Osceola, our neighbors, in two thousand and six, they passed a mandate for a minimum of an LPN in every school. That is something that they require in each school's budget. They also have lead RNs, but they are covering approximately ten assigned schools because much smaller school district, obviously. They have a dedicated nursing subpool, it's a, a group of nurses that they have on staff that serve as subs, and so they are folks that are actually trained in school nursing and, and not just like community nurses, so they are on staff, and their turnover is remarkably low. And again, we're just giving you some of the key points of some of the, some of the districts that we stuttered, studied. Palm Beach County, remember, that was the county that was approximately ninety-some odd dollars per student that they were investing? Well, that's because in nineteen ninety-seven, Palm Beach County established the Healthcare District. And that healthcare district, again, funded through a tax, worked, has worked since that time in partnership with Palm Beach County Public Schools and the Palm Beach County Health Department. And its goal then and still is to staff RNs in all schools. So they have that ongoing, non-sunsetting funding source for that health district. So, they have that ongoing, non-sunsetting funding source for that health district, which is dedicated to school health and wellness programs. The Healthcare District actually trains and employs the nurses and oversees the nursing staff. And they also have dedicated health technicians that carry out all of the state mandated screenings so that the nurses do not have to do those. So, they have technicians that provide those throughout the district. All right. So, now, we're going to take you home with some recommendations and some areas of opportunity. And these were presented as potential next steps for consideration based on the research. And again, this was the assimilation of a lot of data, a lot of best practices, and some ideas possibly for you and the administration to consider as next steps for moving forward. The thing that we realized first and foremost is that anytime you commission a study and you do a lot of research, the last thing that any of us want to see happen is for it to be something, I'm not suggesting that this would happen, but, you know, there's a lot of good ideas here and a lot of information, and you all are stretched and have so much on your plates to begin with. The first recommendation really is, could we identify and appoint a person who is dedicated to the next steps? Okay? Somebody who is responsible for following through. And the recommendation also is, this is a really complex issue. You know, all these potential funding sources, it's somebody who really needs to understand the financing side of it and also the programming side of it, needs to understand, ideally, school nursing, because as I said, it's different than regular nursing and healthcare. And that that person be accountable to Dr. Cartwright with a direct connection to the It's just, it's like we all have regular jobs, we're all busy, we're all, you know, so if it ends up just being one more thing for somebody to do, you know, our concern was that it wouldn't receive the same level of priority as if you had somebody who was dedicated, maybe in a time-limited fashion, you know, to this, a contracted person for a short time. And that might be one of those areas, I'm kind of editorializing here, but that might be one of those areas where the potential funders could come together and say, hey, you know, we would like to all be a piece of that and the follow-up. And might be able to, you know, say, we would give a grant to the school district, you know, somehow, some way, so that you could identify the right person to be able to see this put into play. So, that's just one thought. Prioritization, maintain the gold achievement status, no doubt that is going to happen. Other things to potentially prioritize, something that has become the buzz in health and education through the CDC is the whole school, whole community, whole child model. You used to hear this referred to as coordinated school health, which is really how we modeled and developed our healthy school teams, was on the concept of making sure that you had all areas of this wheel involved in making sure that you had a healthy school environment and all of the services and everything in play. Well, now, it has been adopted by the American Society of Curriculum Development as well as health organizations, again, as this model to ensure that barriers to learning are addressed from a health perspective. So, one thought is to, and we've done this with our School Health and Wellness Advisory Council, is to ensure that we are organized around this model, that we have the right people at the table as we're moving forward, that each of those areas around the wheel from the community are potentially engaged in making sure that we have a robust school health and wellness advisory council and plan. We know we need to do some additional analysis. We need to take a look at that definition and selection of critical, substantial, and moderate need schools. You know, things have changed over the last couple of years. So, you know, some schools are in greater need than they were a couple of years ago. So, that's something that is going to be a constant need is to take a look at that. Consider new community health data. You all may realize that hospitals now are required to collect a great bit of data about the needs of their communities that they serve. So, we are awash in data related to community health. And so, we need to bring our hospital partners together and say, especially those that are collecting data on children, and say, what do we know? You know, what's happening out there? What are the trends since you started collecting the data? And so, we need to consider this new data that is available. We need to look at maybe doing some deeper data collection amongst the highest-need schools to determine what kind of health models really need to be in place in those schools. And then, we need to determine if current funding is being directed to highest-need schools and make necessary adjustments where you can, obviously. You know, sometimes I'm asked that question, for instance, about the Winter Park Health Foundation. Well, why do you fund in, you know, some of the Winter Park schools like Dahmerick or Brookshire or whatever? Because, you know, they may not be, you know, low-income or high-need schools. Well, that's because that's our footprint, is that we are, you know, our charter is to serve Winter Park Maitland and Eatonville. But there are other funders that are funding, you know, private and public funders that we've been funding the same schools year after year after year. So, maybe we need to take a look at those and adjust some of the funding that we currently have on hand. Always want to take a look at your current, you know, staffing conditions, expertise, capacity, retention rates. And those are the sort of things that we didn't necessarily have access to all the data that would be needed to do that. But I think if we're going to take a real deep look at this, we need to, you know, need to do that. That would be, for instance, consider ways to, you know, address challenges at the district level. You see a couple of things that are mentioned there. And then, at the learning community level, and then at the individual school level. One of the things we know is that you saw the number of schools that each lead RN is handling. That lead RN concept, you know, works well, but they're, you know, they've got so many schools that they are responsible for. So, maybe we need to take a look at how do we distribute that workload a little bit differently? And maybe we need to talk about adding, in this instance, one thought was to add a nurse-practitioner at each learning community level. We need to continue to learn from others. And since we first presented the preview of this report, some of this has already taken place. For instance, there are several conferences that are dedicated to school nursing and school health, and much to be learned from partners across the country, districts across the country, health departments, funders, et cetera. Was it you that attended the named conference or?
One of my staff members.
One of your staff members did. So, the National Alliance for Medicaid and Education, the named conference, is an annual event where, you know, again, that's always a moving target in terms of billing and maximizing reimbursement for Medicaid. But that is a conference, and you all did attend that. The National School-Based Health Alliance and the National Association of School Nurses, those take place in the summer. So, that would be something that I know you have planned for the summer months. Connect with partners like the American Academy of Pediatrics, who have become very active advocates as it relates to school health and school nursing. Look at forming a community advisory committee or task force to look at these best practices. You know, committee members could include school board members, hospital leadership, foundation nonprofit staff, potential funders, and PCAN, which is our Primary Care Access Network, who are great partners. Sustainability, you know, that's always an issue. You know, if we want to get something started, I think the initial projection was that it was a little over $4 million a year to have licensed nurses in our schools, but that's an annual investment. That was in your PSP. And so, you don't want to start something unless you can sustain it. So, we need to look at maximizing reimbursements via those things that I mentioned earlier. And then, looking at and expanding partnerships with the federally qualified health centers, Medicaid-managed care organizations, and they are already in a position to be able to bill. So, what can we do to partner with them? Data collection. As we move towards reimbursement and working together with hospitals, you know, data is king. And the capacity, we talked about it earlier too, to be able to do these things seamlessly in the midst of your school nursing practice. We need to look at an electronic medical record-keeping system that is aligned with your student management system. For instance, in our schools, we developed one many years ago because there wasn't something off the shelf. Now, there are many off-the-shelf projects. In fact, we're working with Dr. Cartwright to pilot the implementation of a program called Wellagent in our 12 schools starting in the new year. And that has not only the student data record-keeping portion of it, so that, and it follows the student year after year after year, so that school nurse can see patterns in that student's health condition, but it has the capacity to bill, built right in. So, after that appointment is completed, you're able to just basically do a couple of clicks, and it is able for the district to be able to turn around and do the, actually conduct more billing. So, electronic medical record-keeping is critical. And then, connecting with the School-Based Health Alliance, as mentioned before, and then incorporate evaluation for all your funders right up front. Community partnerships. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we are doing great things already in this district, in this county, as it relates to community partnerships. But there is one area of opportunity that keeps popping up, and that is the potential to work with UCF and other colleges locally that are training folks in health professions. They need ours, working with children, working with families. And I can't tell you the number of requests that we get for, you know, could we come, could our nurses rotate through the schools in your clinics? Could Dr. Vinnie Chulani from Orlando Health, I remember when he was responsible for the Teen Express Program and all the pediatric residents, you know, could he bring them? He wanted to bring them in to work, for instance, at Evans and at Jones. And so, we need to look at, is that a possibility? How could we make that happen? I know there are liabilities associated with that. There's risk management issues, there's all of the legalities. But it seems like there could be the opportunity for a win-win between those community institutions and those practitioners to be able to extend more services and to give them the experience that they need working with children and youth. And then, the possibility, one of the things we talked about as next steps, is maybe we bring the funders together, and this is something we could consider at that follow-up meeting that we want to have, that I know Debbie's going to mention, is to fund a three-year pilot program to increase staffing with nurse practitioners and to really look at how we could initiate billing for nurse practitioners in the schools, like we have at our two school-based health centers. But right now, we're underwriting all of that for free. But how could we implement something where you're actually billing to be able to bring in revenue to offset your expenses related to that? Work with area hospitals to evaluate how school health services reduce non-emergency visits to hospital emergency departments. Okay? This is something that if we got all of our hospital partners together and we were able to figure out a way, I mean, we have so many families and kids. I serve on the Community Health Improvement Council Board for Florida Hospital, and we talk all the time, and JB will definitely support me in this, about, you know, the number of people that are being seen in our emergency rooms for such expensive care and clogging those, you know, emergency rooms for primary care purposes. So, how do we, you know, teach the community and work with the community so that they are able to acquire those services in community settings such as schools, for instance, and the federally qualified health centers and wellness cottages or whatever, as opposed to going to the emergency departments? That would be a huge plus for the hospitals and their bottom lines, obviously, and, you know, would be ultimately much more convenient for the families than going into a hospital emergency department. In fact, just yesterday, in the National Association of School Nurses Journal, there's a whole spreadsheet that has been put together, a whole study was done on return on investment. And something I want to give to Dr. Cartwright to take a look at, and it says, get your hospitals to actually ask at admission time, what school do you attend? So that you can then begin to analyze, you know, is school with a nurse, school without a nurse, school with a nurse practitioner, you know, and begin to really figure out the ROI. And then, a big area, consider how new technology and telehealth services can be used to improve and expedite care. Remember, we talked about those 50, 60 kids in and out of the clinic? We talked about those complex cases. You know, we need to talk about, for instance, Nemours with their Care Connect program that you've probably seen advertised on TV. They have the technology now to be able to bring it out into the schools, so to work together with a nurse, okay? It would have to be somebody, you know, with some medical training and background to be able to address the needs in a quicker, faster, probably cheaper fashion because of telehealth and what is available. So, the Winter Park Health Foundation is going to be working together with Nemours over the next few months to test telehealth in Glen Ridge Middle School. We have a school there that has some students with some significant chronic health issues. Asthma is one thing in particular that, and we're going to hopefully have 10 to, well, 15 to 25 students working together with Dr. Vias from Nemours to test out what telehealth would look like. And so, the idea there is to inform us, not just to serve the kids at Glen Ridge, but to learn, how's it work? What do we need to do? What do we need to tweak? So that we could then potentially expand that out across the district. Again, it's just a little pilot program to expand out. I think I might have missed one? Nope. Okay. Recommendations and next steps, we need to involve the parents. We need to look at what are the potential unmet needs, interactive resources for families, how do we use PCAN and 211? And then, health literacy is a huge issue, and that's another area where trained and certified nurses have the experience to work with families on health literacy, to teach families how to enroll in health insurance, how to extend care outside of the school, how to navigate the healthcare system, how to understand the need to get the prescriptions filled, how to go about getting the prescriptions filled. These are things that quite often we take for granted. But again, with our more and more diverse population, health literacy is becoming a huge issue. We've got to teach people how to use the healthcare system that exists. So, that, very important. These are the partners that exist in what is called PCAN, the Primary Care Access Network. I have been, the Winter Park Health Foundation has been an ad hoc member of PCAN since its inception many years ago. And I have kind of served as the quasi-school health linkage to PCAN. But this is something, this is a group that it would behoove the district to engage in. They, I know, have been a player in the School Health and Wellness Advisory Council, but I think it would be beneficial for us to have a seat at this table, for the district to also be represented at the PCAN table, because each one of the folks listed up here would be a potential partner when it comes to expanding school health services. They are already seeing the folks that are uninsured have the greatest need. Many of them don't provide children's health services, but they provide services to the rest of the family. So, these are all, some of them are current partners, but others, I think, and I know they are all eager and anxious to see how they could help and be supportive and link to a robust school health program. Policies and advocacy, this is an area for government relations, really, and Dr. Cartwright's area, to make sure you're part of those school health advocacy organizations. Follow federal and state policies. For a while there, there was a lot of activity going on. Again, we'll have to see what happens with a lot of this. Again, we'll have to see what happens with a lot of this with the new administration, but school health was the buzz, and I hope there will be enough momentum to keep some of the legislation that was in the pipeline going, but track and support appropriate legislative efforts, and then engage community partners in advocacy efforts as well. So that is an overview of the findings of the report, the data, the best practices in some of the other districts, and then, again, the analysis and the potential for some areas of opportunity. And I know Dr. Cartwright wants to respond with, you know, some things that have been happening since we first previewed this early in the year, so I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. Well, board, that provides you with an overview of the study and what they were able to find and what they were able to determine. When Ms. Watson and I had an opportunity to take a look at some of these preliminary information originally, we saw that there was some additional information that we wanted to make sure that the community at large, as well as the board, was aware of, and actions that Orange County Public Schools has been taking for some of the areas. In particular, we wanted to focus in on our Medicaid revenue, because we really started about three years ago, making a very concerted effort in order to increase our Medicaid revenue. And so, we just want to give you a brief overview, a little bit of a history on what that process is, and where we are today as a result of that. So within our steps that we have taken in order to improve our Medicaid revenue, is one of the very first things we did, is originally, many of the positions that were eligible to bill for Medicaid were being paid out of grant positions, mainly out of the IDEA grant. And so, with discussions, we looked at that to see, will that give us a return on investment if we were to reallocate those positions over into our general revenue? And it was determined that, yes, if we were to transfer them out of the grant and put them into general revenue, then at that point in time, those positions could bill. Because if those positions are paid for out of the grant at 100%, then what that means is that you can't bill, because it's called double-dipping at that point in time. So that was one of the very first steps and initial steps that we did. We also established a unified online Medicaid documentation system, and it's also a billing system as well. And this is key, because as we were moving towards Medicaid billing, we wanted to ensure for our staff that we weren't asking them to do double work. And let me clarify what that means. Oftentimes, especially if you're like a speech-language pathologist, you have to document the services that you're providing because of the documentation requirements that are related to what services you provided for a student, for their individualized education plan, their IEP. But then, you would have to go at a separate time, separate date, and go in, and then go to bill Medicaid. And so, we saw that as a double way of working. So we did go out for an RFP, we did, at that point in time, went ahead and went to an automated system that serves both roles. So it can automatically take the notes that's necessary to document the services that were provided, but also, at the same time, bills for Medicaid. And so, our therapies, again, utilize that documentation. We also have assigned personnel for data entry for service providers, such as like our social workers, our school psychologists, as well as our nurses. So we have dedicated staff that oftentimes, for those positions where they may not have to document, because it's not related to an IEP or a 504 plan. Instead, what they do is they turn over the documentation to the staff. So again, we're taking the burden of work for the Medicaid claiming off of that staff, as well as ensuring that we are capitalizing on the claiming that is available to us. Billing occurs in the background, as I was mentioning before, in the online system. And one of the things we also utilize is really making sure that people understood what were those billable events. And so, we did some very intense training. We continue to do follow-up training with our staff, because we do get new staff members, to ensure that they understand how to utilize the system appropriately, and what can they bill for, so that we can maximize the billable events. As I was mentioning before, it's an electronic online system, do have to be connected to the internet, but that typically is not a problem, since they're all at our schools oftentimes when they are billing. The system itself is called MAX Capture, and it is developed by Civic Solutions. As I was mentioning before, it is our primary documentation system at this point in time, because we were trying to merge them together, and it does store all entries. With this online documentation system, when it's tracking all of the information, it's tracking what occurs over an extended period of time, so we can always go back and pull back the information, which is critical, because oftentimes, if a parent wants to know what therapies were provided to a particular child related to their IEP, we're able to go back and retrieve that information, as well as the current information that is in-house. So it allows us to really keep a nice systematic way of tracking all of the information. And more importantly, I wanted to point out to you, so who are those positions, who are eligible to bill for Medicaid? And so, you have a list before you, these are your school psychologists, your social workers, your speech-language pathologists, occupational, certified occupational therapists, your physical therapists, and physical therapist assistants, registered nurses, and then, there's some caveats that lie to the last two groups. So licensed practice nurses, because in Orange County Public Schools, they are classified positions, so it's a little bit more difficult for them to bill, to utilize the system in order to bill for Medicaid, or even complete the paperwork, if they have an overflow of children going throughout their day, because they are hourly. And then, with their school health assistants as well, because in order for a school health room assistance, in order to bill, they have to have had the CPR training, as well as the first aid training, which there is cost that's associated with those in order for them to be trained. But those are requirements that they must have in order to bill. But again, they would hit the same concern that our licensed practical nurse, our LPN nurses face, in that they are hourly. This just kind of gives you a history, that between 1997 and 2008, the OCPS billed Medicaid-eligible services through an internal developed system, known as SMART system. It was utilized basically only to capture and submit Medicaid funding. It was a process in and of itself, it was separate. In 2009, the district then moved to MAX Capture, and the online system was to service documentations for ESE students. However, it was not a seamless MAX Capture, we actually were a part of a cohort of school districts that utilized these services in order to bill. Beginning in 2013 through 2015, this is where we reviewed our positions funded out of the IDEA federal grant, moved them to the general budget, and allowing them to bill for the Medicaid projected. So I know a lot of times you're wondering, okay, so what does this actually equate to? What return on investment has this resulted in? There are two portions, as Ms. Watson was explaining earlier, when you're related to Medicaid billing, you have what is known as fee-for-service. So those are the individuals who actually provide the services to the students directly, and those are your providers, as you might say. And the information, or the revenue information that we receive from them, we actually get monthly updates on that. So we have current information as to what groups, how much each group is billing, we monitor that in order to ensure that there isn't something that's getting in the way, preventing them from being able to bill. So we look at trend data from the past, in other words, what are the past billings? They also have a year for which, after a service has been provided, in which to go back and back pay, as you might say. In other words, I gave you a service, maybe May last year, I can still bill for that. And so, oftentimes, that's something we try to work with our staff on, is try to keep it as current as possible, especially now that we have the systems aligned for our therapies, because we want to know that the IEP notes are current and to date. However, some of those other subgroups, for example, your social workers, or your school psychologists, who don't have IEP notes, they may not turn it in the day that it occurred. And so, that's, or the week that it occurred. So we are always encourage them to try to maintain current billing, so that we have a better picture and a better understanding of where we are on our fee-for-service. The second portion of that is for our administrative claiming. And so, we have been working very diligently to ensure that we are capturing, to the best of our ability, what is known as administrative claiming. We have gone in, we've realigned some of the positions, we've ensured, we've gone through job descriptions, because ACHA really defines for us who is eligible for being in that pool for administrative claiming. And also, administrative claiming is dependent upon the sampling that occurs at each of the quarters. That funding is always a year in arrears. So in other words, we can monitor, but it's always a year lag data. So I will give you an example, just so you can get an idea as far as our return on investment. Back in the, posted in 2011, so this would have been for the 2010 school year, for administrative claiming, we had, the district accumulated $2.4 million approximately. For the most recent posting that came back out, and this would be the totals for the 2015, so it was posted in the 2016 year, we are now at $7.1 million. So we are, we have well gone and are really capitalizing on this. That is something, again, that I attribute to not only the system that we have put into place in order to do that, but also to a very dedicated staff in my department. I'm extraordinarily proud of their work and their commitment to ensuring that we are not leaving any stone unturned, as we are looking for ways in which to capitalize and own the billing. I say to you that we still do not have an accurate picture of where we are as for our revenue on Medicaid, because as I was mentioning, we've been taking this in a phased approach, and we've been doing this over the past three years, in a phased approach, in order to capitalize on the administrative claiming piece of, portion of that, as well as fee-for-service. And so, because we're always a year in arrears, we're not going to realize the changes that were put into place last year, we're not going to actually realize what that gain will be until later, later this year, or the beginning of next school year. So I wanted to let you be aware of that. I do anticipate, though, that we will start stabilizing a little bit on the income, because we really have taken a very concerted effort, and it's not only my staff, but it's also been the staff of multiple departments across the entire district. So we've had conversations, even with transportation, we've had conversations, of course, with Finance Department, with Human Resources. This has been a multi-division department approach in order to ensure that we are billing to the best of our ability. But I did want to at least let you be aware of our most recent information, and as I was saying before to you, for administrative claiming, that's at $7.1 million. And then, for fee-for-services, we are at approximately $688,000. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our superintendent, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Just a couple of notes, members of the board, and I understand this is quite an extensive report, but I wanted to make a couple of comments. First, certainly, thanks to Ms. Watson and our other partners who paid for the consultants to look into the information. It is important to note, it is in no way an indication of their expertise, the data lags, it was a year-old data, now it's about a year and a half old data, but still, the information, I think, is critical to our work. I want to give credit, about three years ago, it was actually John Davis, who worked in ESE for a short period of time, but he'd been in our IT, in our technical side of the house, and he was the one that raised this issue. We are not getting enough reimbursements through Medicaid. And I will tell you, what makes, what made Rick Collins at the time, and Dale Kelly uncomfortable, was that whole notion of double-dipping. It's highly technical, if you don't back those positions out of IDEA, and you try to bill for them, you're going to get into deep trouble. And I think they had some historical information of other districts that may have fallen into that concern. So about three years ago was when we knew we had some issues where we could claim additional dollars. For the Winter Park Health Foundation and Florida Hospital, and our other partners to come in and help us do an extensive study, gives us a more holistic picture of where our needs are, and how we compare to other districts. Secondly, I think it's important to note, I think we have to say publicly, the reason the school nurses are in our PSP is because we acknowledge we cannot provide everything we want for our children by way of health provisions and health services through our standard funding. And so, years ago, when the chairman challenged us for a philanthropic strategic plan, the notion was, what do you need to reach your goal with student success that we can't pay for out of our regular dollars? So we acknowledged, far ahead of time, that this was something we would need some philanthropic support for, and hence, it appeared in our PSP, our philanthropic strategic plan. So I want to acknowledge again, we understand we cannot, nor should we own, everything our students need around their healthcare. That's a larger issue for our entire community. Dr. Sharon and others certainly struggle with appropriate funding to make sure our children are taken care of as well. But I do think we can be very strategic about how much we offer, and how many solutions we can solve here in the district. While the recommendations are extensive, we can certainly prioritize and make sure we are taking care of those that come under our ability to control. I am most excited, I have to tell you about the telehealth, the notion that we can use technology to provide more expertise at our schools, and that pilot, I heard about it earlier this week, so I couldn't wait for her to say it out loud, I didn't want to spring it on you. That pilot, I think, will inform us on ways that we can try to expand, stretch dollars further by having more medical expertise through technology in more of our schools. So I'm extremely excited about that and what it may mean for our future as well. So thanks again to the Winter Park Health Foundation, Florida Hospital, Nemours, and others who helped us get this study done. There's certainly lots of work to be done, but we will be very dependent on our partners to help us provide what our students need. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Watson, you and all of our partners, thank you. That was a wonderful report, and I know we can, but let me just say it out loud, I pray that we can get you back at the table here in the next month and a half, two months, to continue the conversation, because frankly, I don't think we can take other additional steps without really working hand-in-hand with our partners. So thank you all for working with us on this, and caring so much about our community's children. We have a lot of questions on this one, which is wonderful, I think. So let me start with you, Ms. Gould.
Well, it's because of school nurse program that I'm a school board member, so.
Right.
This is my roots.
You know, I've been working on this a lot.
Yes, we have. Yes, that's exactly how we first met. So there's a couple of things. I'm thrilled to hear that we have taken steps, and Dr. Cartwright gave me a separate briefing on the Medicaid, because I've been asking about that since I became a school board member, and where the opportunities are. You know, when I was looking at, now, these are old numbers, but the gap is relevant, and you're closing in on it, but when I was looking at Hillsborough, they had a difference in the 13, 14, of 16,000 students, and a net gain in Medicaid revenue of over $5 million. So there's tremendous opportunity to help offset some of this. A couple of editorial comments that I would like to make. I know that some of the health central, in particular, school nurses stayed in their posts because they were dedicated, but they're not classified as RNs right now. That limits their ability to deliver the services that we're talking about, including what we can get reimbursed, because they can't be delivering RN services if they are classified lower than an RN, which means we can't gain that reimbursement either. So one of the things I'd like us to look at, as we go through the budget, is reclassifying, if we have an RN, can we look at what that reimbursement is, what the benefit to the school health is if we put them back to the RN positions that they were originally in? Because not only is it the service delivery, but it's that health education that Debbie was talking about, is, that is so vitally important. Which leads kind of into eligibility, too. RNs are great referral sources for Medicaid eligibility. And certainly, we have a panel of experts out there who have resources at their hospitals for Medicaid eligibility, it behooves them to get them eligible. We don't need to duplicate that service, but how do we formalize a referral system, especially with a lot of the families that are probably going to nationalize next year, and will become Medicaid eligible? So there's going to be a huge opportunity. And as Dr. Cartwright pointed out, we can go back a year and capture even previous services. There's rules in that, but there is some ability to capture past revenues. I love the idea of a forum, but even more than just kind of the partner formal forum, but looking at what's happened with homelessness in the community, with the commission, and the partnerships with. and the partnerships with funders, I think there's some modeling in there, because there's times you're going to want to talk shop, and there's times you're going to want to talk visioning and funding. And sometimes the players are the same, and sometimes they're not. But, you know, looking at that HSN model and, and that, I think there's some potential in there. And maybe even a hybrid partnership with the Department of Health. And I don't know what that would look like, because that gets really complicated when you get Medicaid and all these funding sources coming in, but it seems like there's a little nugget there, since we don't have the taxes of my home state, Taxachusetts. So, the, I'm going to throw this out here, and I'm probably going to be shot by my fellow board members, but I'm going to throw it out anyway. As we go into the end of the 10 years with the millage, and we look towards the support that we got from the community, I think there is a case for support to look at mental and school-based healthcare services, especially if we could make them also community access points for something there.
You mean ten years?
Ten years, ten years, nine, that, no, I'm sorry.
It would only be.
Four years.
The millage is only four years.
I'm sorry, four years, yes, the four years.
Set to 2018.
Or the Halfpenny. But, but looking at both the millage and the Halfpenny, are there opportunities if we're, if we're not needing, we'll always need to go back to the community. If we, if we don't feel we can go back to the community in the same way that we have in the past, I would like us to explore that. Because I don't, you know, again, having my roots in this and having gone down to Palm Beach and admired, and I was working for a healthcare district that had no more tax benefit at that time. And if we had, you know, we could have done what you did back then with the school nurse program and that expansion process. So, I, I really want to see what we can do. It may not be the right choice for us, but it'd be worth it. The UCF thing, you know, there has been a broadening of the sovereign immunity laws, and we really need to take a look at that. And would they be covered, especially since they're under a licensing program? I know they're not all licensed yet, but some are in degrees of licensing, depending on where they are in their career mode. They could be going on for graduate school or whatever. So, can we look at that and maybe even some other experts? I mean, Shepherd's Hope is a great model for that, and what they have done under the protections of that sovereign immunity and those laws. And again, I'd like to reiterate, I would also like to look at the, of opening up our schools to be more cottage or health-based community centers and partnering with our hospitals and our, our medical providers on that, because we touch so many lives. And while we might be helping that child or that teacher who's uninsured, we can help prevent. I mean, that's just logic. We, the data will be helpful, but if you, if you train it, I know you have impact on it, and that's the, from experience on that. So, I, I think that's important. And I think, you know, united way with new leadership and Bob Brown retiring, there may be some opportunity for a global look in this, and maybe some early funding, especially as we look up how we can create sustainable revenue sources that are not just philanthropy. But, but that is something else to maybe throw out there. And as we, with the foundation, with the Orange County Public Schools Foundation, formalize and enhance our relationships with our school-based funding opportunities, we had a great model at, at Orlando Health/Health Central to create philanthropy at this grassroots level. There's, that's another group that we should have somehow represented at our funders forum that goes back, not just from the foundation's standpoint, but let's challenge them perhaps when the timing is right and their, their project-based initiatives. You know, a lot of them are doing technology, but the fact is, we're going to take that over. We're going to take that baton from them. So, we should look at how do we best direct that energy? So, those are my thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. And I didn't start the clock on anybody, I don't want to, because I'd rather we just all take one bite of the apple, get all your comments out. So, just watch the clock yourself a little bit, try to keep it to six, seven, eight minutes, because I don't think we're going to have time to come back for a second round. Mrs. Robinson.
First off, I just want to say thank you. That was amazing, a lot of information, but amazing. I do have a few questions, and then I do have some other comments. One question is, and maybe it was on that one slide, and it just went so quick, I missed it. Why is Palm Beach County's per-student cost so much higher? I mean, where are they getting their funding? Is it those partnerships that they have?
Yeah, it's tax.
They, so Palm Beach has a tax. Now, I knew Miami had one.
They have a real healthcare district.
Okay, I knew Miami Dade did, I didn't know Palm Beach did.
Oh, yeah, they actually were first.
Okay. How much is their tax?
As Pam said, she's visited, I've visited down there, yeah.
How much is their tax?
I don't recall.
I don't remember either.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I think it's like two mils per thousand.
Two mils per thousand.
Oh, so it's, it's a millage is not, okay, wow. Okay. Well, that answers that question. And on that, while we're having that, while that's the answer, which I missed that somehow, must have been looking at something else, now you look at everything, and you're thinking one thing. I agree with you, I'd love for us to have a tax here. I'm on the Orange County Children's Leadership Alliance, and we've been working on trying to get a tax supported, and we have, we have fallen on deaf ears with the Orange County Commission, because for us to be able to get the tax verbiage on the ballot in 2016, they laughed at us, and laughed at us, but they, they were not interested. We're still fighting for 2018, but they're so far, I mean, we can't, and you think, it's children's issues, it's mental health. I mean, there's so many wonderful things, you'd think they, so we're, we're meeting again in January, we will have this conversation again. So, we are fighting for that, so someone else might be taking up the, you know, baton for us. It might not have to be us, but that is being fought on our, with our alliance, anyway. That's one good thing. And then, slide 31, where you showed the different salaries.
Mm-hmm.
And our SHAs, our School Health Assistance, the 14, 321, explain to me, is that part-time? Is that a full-time position?
Those are healthcare aides, they're, they're classified.
They're just classified.
Very low-level.
Yeah, I mean, because that, that's like, I mean, I mean, I know, what do they, what do they make? Eight dollars an hour? What is our, so, so they're making our base, our bottom-level salary is at our lowest level? Okay, that was one thing. And then, right, and then.
Hang on, Dr. Cartwright was trying to intervene.
Oh, sorry.
My apologies. I believe that the figures that you're seeing, there are going to be salaries only and do not include benefits.
Right.
Right.
Of course. And then, the, when you were doing your recommendations, and one of them was to consider new community health data, the data, you say we're data-rich. Is a lot of that data being collected because of the Affordable Care Act? Was that part of the Affordable Care Act?
Yes, it was, yeah.
So, do we think that's going to disappear?
Need for hospitals to, who knows?
I know.
Yeah, it's so early, but.
Because I know, I remember when ACA originally started, you know, the doctors' offices were frustrated that they all had to become, you know, technologically savvy, and they had to get on computers, and they had to collect the data. I'm just wondering, now that it's been, you know, while, do you hear in your world, in your health industry, are they more comfortable with it, or are they actually liking the data that they have collected?
Well, most of that sort of data collection is more related to billing and more, you know, that's here to stay. Electronic health records and billing and all of that. The type of data that I was referring to in that instance is more related to community needs and health risks and health assessments as far as the entire community is concerned. So, more the actual, either phone surveys or focus groups or whatever the hospitals are using to obtain data on what are the health needs of their potential population.
Right, okay. So, do they like having that? Do they like, do they like having that data?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I mean, it's incredibly valuable in terms of service planning and, you know, knowing what the needs are that are out there. It just never was required before, and now it's actually some form of data collection is required on a regular basis.
And then, my last question to Ms. Gould's point about the reimbursements in Osceola, they also, I noticed, they have, is it an LPN or an RN that's mandated at every school? Is it an LPN or an RN?
LPN, at least a minimum of an LPN.
A minimum of an LPN.
But many of them have got RNs in place. Yeah, there you go, nine, nine RNs and the five new RNs.
District mandate for minimum of one LPN in every school.
Yep.
And then you're saying, okay, so, and you're saying, I'm just wondering if that's why they're doing so much better with their reimbursements, because they have, I don't know. But then again, you said the LPNs aren't as, they're better than the health, school health assistance in, in reimbursements, as far as gaining the reimbursements. You can answer.
When it comes to our LPNs, what you have to look at for them, they are certified. The main difference oftentimes between our LPNs and our RNs is that a majority of our RNs have the bachelor's degree. So, that's one major difference. Within Orange County, our RNs are considered to be at an instructional level.
Right.
Whereas LPNs are, are considered to be at the classified level. So, what that translates to is for LPNs, they're on an hourly basis. And so, if you have a full load of children.
I wonder if Osceola does it that way, too? Do we know if their LPNs are salaried or classified? Just purely for, maybe that's why their reimbursements are so much higher, because the LPNs are right there in the schools, at every school, maybe that's why. Just a thought. So, anyway, we have lots to chew on and lots of great information. I love all of it. I wish we could do everything. I'm in.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. This is just one of the finest research report I've seen on, for healthcare for our children, and this, thank you, Mr. Chair, with the philanthropic strategic plan here. I'm very impressed with the amount of information that you've brought to us, and thank you so much. The research is just incredible, because you not only did the large counties, but you did the small counties, you did the surrounding counties, and, and I like that, to be compared with the larger counties and then also the surrounding counties, to see how they are able to do. A couple of things I wanted to say, I think I want to commend Dr. Jenkins, the super, the chairperson, the chair of this board, Mrs. Sublett, and Dr. Jenkins ask each board member for a wish list, and high on the list, we each brought in our recommendation. And I know that Ms. Gould had mentioned, but it was already granted to us. We definitely saw, we are deeply embedded in the mental health counselors with so many things happening. So, we didn't have to wait. Immediately, Dr. Jenkins took it on and provided all of us with the mental health counselors that we asked for. And I really want to commend her for that. And the chairman are taking that up and doing it, because it was just spontaneous. Had we not brought it to that meeting that the chair had asked us to bring our wish list, I don't believe that Dr. Jenkins probably would have even addressed it. But it was a need for the board, and we all approved it, and we all are very pleased that we have those mental health counselors in place. Is it enough? No, nothing is never enough. If the student population is growing, then our mental health counselor needs to grow. If the student population is growing, our LPNs needs to grow. If the student population is growing, our RNs really needs to grow. And then, we're really trying to encourage our LPNs to move up to an RN. I am in Osceola County as, as a lead teacher there in Osceola County, and working, we've always, I'm blessed in my school, both of my, the two schools that I've worked in in Osceola County, where we have had full-time registered nurses. And because of the type of school that I'm in, we have always had a full-time registered nurse there on campus because of the needs of the student. I think every school, you're on the right track, needs a registered nurse. I was very fortunate when doing the crossover, and the crossover was when the, the DSEG order was in place, and they moved teachers. I really wanted to always commend Dream Lake Elementary, not Dream Lake, but, well, Dream Lake also, but Dream Lake was later, down in Apopka, but Inglewood Elementary, Darrell Flynn. We always, in the 60s, the PTA paid, paid for that full-time nurse. And I had the opportunity to work with that nurse. It was just one of the finest thing ever. And then, the National Education Association did an article on it, and they were trying, you know, it was like a major thing. Should the PTA have to pay for it? And, and I also wrote an article in reference to why that should happen, because at that time, we did not have you and the, and the Winter Park Health Foundation and all the other partners that you have involved. But that was a need. I still would like to go back, if it cannot, some kind of way that we could get our PTA, I know when Darrell Flynn was president of the PTA in Orange County, they would try to do things like this within the school, but the fund, not you, not, I didn't say you. I said when you were in the, in the, you didn't get the nurses. You weren't even born when we had the nurses at Inglewood. Sorry about that, you were not born. I mean, I'm talking about during the crossover. You know when the crossover was? In the 60s. But when you came about and became president, you all were trying to carry on healthcare endeavors, because that's when we had the commissioner in Winter Park, who took over the little babies, along with Harriet Murillo, the, the new commissioner that worked here in Orange County. She's on the Community Action Board with me, she's going to kill me, Joey, who's your new committee? Thank you. Okay, that was the fighter for healthcare. And, and March LaBarge, those were our fighters, okay? They were our fighters that I had an opportunity to work with on the threshold with the guidance counselor, because most of that was thrust upon us to make sure that these children were well taken care of. One other thing that I would like to say with the, with the Winter Park Foundation and the investment that you all have done in the children, I personally want to thank you. And I know you said it's your footprint, but I think your footprint, it's actually, they are, your prints are beginning to trod into other areas. I think that this would be a great thing for you to do, because hospitals are in the east side, they're, hospitals are on the east side. They're on the west side in Winter Garden. They're in the central area, so many, and they're not doing what you're doing. So, that is one area that we really need to get everybody on one accord to do what you do, so your footprint would not have to have just been the Winter Park and the Eatonville area. But now, because of your tracking, you see a need that those footprints must move on and be able to help others. Looking at the greatest need, I know you did it because of your community, but somewhere along the line, I would like to see a recommendation that when you do go back out and survey, what are the greatest needs? What community has the greatest need? Because to do it, you're almost at a wellness state in your community, because you've done it so well. That's your footprint. So, now, once you've done it well, and you don't have all of the communicable diseases and the children are being, the wellness program is in place, where do you go from there? Is there a greatest need in Orange County with our children? All of us have some, all of us have some kind of problem, okay? Health problem, one way or the other. It may last for a long time, it may not last for a long time. I mean, the other day, Dr. Jara and Dr. Bridget Williams had to roll me out in a chair because of a muscle that I pulled. I couldn't even walk. That was detrimental to me. I never wanted to be rolled out of the boardroom in a chair. That is a major health problem. And then, on yesterday, one of the teacher pull a hamstring in the back, and they had to roll her out. You, you understand what I'm saying? So, just knowing where the greatest need is, even if it's a short period of time, is very important, because you don't want to just beat a dead horse. If everybody is doing well and they seem to be moving, where do you take the fight? So, the next thing, the grant, if you would just go to page 55 and 56 for me, please, slide 55 and 56. I love what you're doing here with the grants, with pages at 56, okay? I love what you're doing here with the grants, with pages at 56, okay? Where you talked about increased provider training and follow-up. I didn't know where you were going to get the money from. We, I know we have one of the finest grant writing department in the nation, and they normally get what they seek. But I was wondering, when you track those bills that are coming in now, that you talked about with the federal government, can you go to 55 for me, one above? I think it's one or two, one more? Okay. I think it's 55, I thought I wrote down, 55 or 54. There it is. Tracking and supporting appropriate legislative efforts, that's a lot. But we do have somebody that can help you in that, and then Darrell is chair of the legislative committee, and then I think we have a great department doing that for us now, that Dr. Jenkins every vamp. That is so important, but you got to get out on that block when it hits, because if you don't get right out there, you're going to miss the tracking time. And that's very important. So you don't know what is available, so keeping in touch with your congressperson, and having that congressional person research this immediately, especially with the new administrator coming in, administrators coming in. We really need to track it as quickly as we can, so that we will know where the deadlines are. And our congressional people would be an icing on the cake for us. And the next one that I had, very quickly, would be the page, I think, 47. And you mentioned the Teen Express, that was so helpful to Evans. At the time, we were working with those students, because a lot of them were, they go, they live in District 5, that was really receiving the most help, because the parents called and asked for it, and we were able to go through the superintendent, previous superintendent, and the present superintendent, to be able to provide those services, and especially at Jones High School. It was very appreciative that when you get up and see the Teen Express, but there were some legalities. And I'm wondering how our legal department can be able, with general counsel, to look at what could stop us from having to fall into the legality that we did run into, that we would not have to run into if the child is under 18, okay? And I think some of it might have been because the child was 18 and they're grown, you know, they're considered grown, believe it or not. On this slide, the committee members can include school board members, hospital leaders, foundation and nonprofit, SNAP, and the fundraisers. I'm wondering, with Dr. Jenkins assisting, why could there not be advisory committee for the health program in every learning community? That every board member and area superintendent formulate this kind of advocacy within the community? Then they have business partners that may be able to listen, and I'm a big advocate, and we have a new person over business partners in the additions office now, I think with Pam Carson, that is assisting her. And we have not received money in the past when we go to events, because we did not have a business department, and Dr. Jenkins have formulated this for the very first time. That person I can see working together with us, and I can also see with the area superintendent, each principal, having somebody within their school system, a business partner that would be interested in the, in the health of our children. And then the last question I wanted to ask, with the LPN recruitment, I know Valencia, you know, is doing extremely well with their program, and then I know that our technical colleges are doing extremely well with their programs, and we graduate LPN, and most of these young men and women, they go on to become registered nurses. I want to know how, what direction are you looking at in recruiting, and what incentive can we even offer that we can maintain them, because they go elsewhere? And yet, we are training them. So I feel just like we train a lot of our graduates for jobs within this school system. I don't know where we stand, and there's no lead to show that we are recruiting and giving incentive to attract our own LPNs, and to get them, the dental hygienist, all of those. I mean, they just parade across our stages every day, but yet, you never hardly hear about them being involved in the foundation, okay, of any sort. So those basically were my need, and I just think that you're doing it, but that might be a few point is that might help us get established. I don't know what direction of the superintendent want to go in that, but when you do it as an overall, you're leaving out a lot of the learning communities. But I think all of the learning communities are large enough that they can have their health advocacy committee, and then they could begin to recruit to work with the children with the greatest need. Who are the children with the greatest need in the area superintendent's community? Who are the children within the greatest need within that, within that principal school that really, really needs the help? We provide it through Dr. Cartwright program medically and physically when they report. But what can we, as a group, through this strategic plan, do to get more people involved, that more children can be reached through what you're doing? And I love what you said about the footprints, Ms. Watson, and I love that. But I love what all three of you are doing. You're extremely talented, you know your work. I love that Dr. Cartwright and Debbie Pedraza, which you are saying about getting those students, getting those students and getting people that are well-qualified to work, because that's the most important key. And I think that our technical schools can really help us. And you can also tell them what they need, because when our kids graduate, most of the business people tell us, that's not what they need. This is what they need. So maybe we can get into our curriculum a little bit differently. And I was surprised when we ran out on the tour with NEMO's when they first opened up, I was just flabbergasted when Dr. Bridget Williams and a group of us went out there, of what they offered, which was a little different from what our curriculum was offering in our nursing field, and how the children were being, you know, treated and everything, even though we do a great job. But I think the knowledge that you have in the healthcare and that you've gained, and Dr. Sharon has been with us for many, many years, he's been with me, with Orange Center way back when he first came to the county. So I really appreciate what you're doing, and I know that we can go farther with this program. So I hope that your recommendations are great, and I hope that we can piggyback on to them. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Covert.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start with thanking Ms. Pedraza, Dr. Cartwright, and Ms. Watson, very thorough report. Thank you for the information. I have two areas I want to color, cover. One of particular interest to me is this partnership with UCF and the clinical rotations for students in the medical field. Do we also have a partnership with Valencia at this time?
I think there are different types of partnerships, but as far as the medical partnerships, there's an opportunity with Valencia Seminole, I mean, the list goes on and on. For instance, in our area, the feeder pattern of schools that we work with, Cambridge University has approached us and has been working with us on some of the screenings, being able to support, but they're not actually currently able to get involved in anything more than just a screening. They can't get involved in the actual clinic work, per se. But there are so many institutions out there now that are training, you know, potentially LPNs, nursing aides, et cetera.
Sure. I think there's going to be a major opportunity there. I sit on the council of Valencia, and yesterday learned that right now, they turn out about 375 nurses per year. But after going and working with the local, different local hospital groups, they understand that they have a need to turn out 800 per year. So they're working on increasing that capacity for students, because they currently turn away 600 per year. So I think that by working, increasing the capacity to work with Valencia and our own CTE program, to Mrs. Gordon's point, I think that's a really good source of, it's a win-win for the students and, and for us to provide those services. So I'd like to see you continue to develop that. I really like that idea. It's just in pilot right now, but I think that's definitely an area of opportunity. And the other, and this is just a seedling of an idea, as we were talking a little bit up here. So we're able to bill Medicaid, and we're using telehealth. Are we able to bill private insurance? Or is that something that we could explore? So let's say if we offered some basic services, not only to our students, but to our faculty and staff, and we're able to partner with Cigna, I know they're already a partner on some of your panels, but it might be an entrepreneurial path that we could explore that could actually fund an RN in every school.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we had Cigna at the table, because the thought there, and this has been done in some of the districts, I believe Hillsborough is doing this, and maybe Pinellas, where they have like clinics within learning communities that serve not only the students, but the staff, and their staff by higher-level practitioners?
Yes, I know, I know Polk County is doing a little bit of that. But what if we looked at it as a school-based, a school-site-based idea, where we are partnering with Cigna, who is our healthcare provider? We could be providing screenings, we could be giving flu shots, we could be providing some basic services, but our employees, most of them are insured through our program, and that could be a funding source to increase what we have in every school, something, an idea to look at.
Dr. Jenkins, do you want to comment? Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Covert. Ms. Moore.
Thank you again for your, your wonderful presentation and report. I had a couple of ideas that may seem, you know, I'm a novice at this, but now that I have a granddaughter, and every time the granddaughter's sick, it seems like I'm the one who has to not work that day, and take her to the doctor. So it has renewed, renewed interest. And so do you think it's possible to get together with some, I know some of our same here today, partners to really make some progress on having some sort of shared cost plan with this? Because it seems as if the county's vested with the Pecan Clinics, and there's children that would, that are going there. We must have data with that through Dr. Sharon's office to know if they were redirected towards our schools. Would that be some sort of cost savings if the county would realize that could then be shifted over to funding these school nurses? And Linda and I have had a little sidebar here about, also, you know, we've been talking about the Medicaid reimbursements, and the possibilities with that being done correctly, that the opportunities to maybe fund more nurses. But is there, is it a legislative issue? This is going to be a question I'll have you address when I finish my comments. But is it possible at all with, with these RNs, that folks with regular insurance could actually access the care, and we could bill? Would there be a way through private insurance that we could come up with some of the funds to be able to afford the nurse? You know, I don't know if that would take legislative action, or what would that require? And then Linda mentioned, you know, our own employees. Would our plant, would our own insurance be able to, with some of our staff, if they were there at the end of the day, would we be able to bill and maybe get closer and closer to funding these nurses through all these means, the Medicaid, the private insurance, funding from the county, and what have you? And so I'm going to have you answer that question, but first, Ms. Pedraza, could you tell me again, is it the $4 million that's mentioned in the philanthropic strategic plan, is that the total cost of having one RN at all of our schools?
The original initiative had a, it was a, it was about a $4 million budget to have an LPN at every elementary school that needed it, and an RN at every high school or middle school. Some of our schools already have that type of staffing, so it was to take care of the schools that did not have it. Now, the original budget did not reflect what the district already puts in towards providing the basic funding for a school health assistant. So we did an adjustment on that, and it's more along the lines of 2.85 million that would be needed to cover the gap for the schools that do not yet have that licensed medical professional.
Right. And the other partner that I forgot, they're all sitting here, here, all sitting out there is, you know, we were talking about looking at the return on investment. Mrs. Gould was talking about that, so maybe there would be some savings that, that could come in donations from the hospitals if they're not seeing so many children at the emergency room. So what would it take to put together a group to actually work out all those sorts of arrangements? I mean, what would, what would be involved?
That is definitely something that, those are some of the discussions that we are pursuing right now with, with the philanthropic plan. And in our last meeting that we, we talked about, we even talked about cost avoidance when you're looking at the emergency room visits and such. And so these are ongoing discussions that we've had. We have not had any type of study completed, you know, a holistic study completed at this point with all of our, all of the major hospitals, in order to determine what type of cost avoidance that could potentially occur. But I do know that that is some of the discussions that are ongoing.
Ms. Sublett, this has really been your issue, and so you've been working on this, so I, you know, I'd love for you to comment on what I said, and what you thought it would take to move this. We've been talking for years, but kind of feels like now's time to see what we can actually get, get done.
Well, one thing that, that we all know, whether we're in the industry or not, is healthcare is very complex, extremely complex. Healthcare billing is probably the most Byzantine thing on the earth, if you ask me. So one of the things that I learned early on in this process is, first of all, I think we have the right people at the table for our community, if you look at who was at that earlier meeting. And then I think we took the right approach, which was to commission this study. So I think we're sort of filling our way through the dark, to be very candid with you, and I think the next step is to reassemble that group in the next, you know, 30 to 45 days, you know, hopefully, and start to bounce these recommendations off them, because I don't think that we're going to be able to accomplish a lot more on our own without the partnership of our major healthcare providers in this community. But, you know, we have three very robust healthcare or hospital systems in this county, and they've always been terrific partners of this entire community. And that's not idle flattery, they are. Anybody who's worked in this community knows that. We have some foundations that have been robust partners of this community and a whole range of efforts. And then, you know, we're the second-largest employer, and someone alluded to this, within the bounds of procurement, but I've always felt like whoever has our business needs to step up to the plate, too, and help out, and, you know, Cigna has got a big contract with OCPS. So I think it's, I think we're going to find out as we continue to talk to the experts what the next steps are. And that conversation will continue. And I think it's already had a tremendous effect, because frankly, and I give all the credit to Ms. Lang and her staff and Dr. Jenkins, but you see already what they've done when it comes just to Medicaid billing practices and dramatic increases that we've had there over the last three years. And I think that's continuing, I'd like to think, to accelerate. And I'm not saying we're the reason for that, but I think the fact that these conversations have been occurring, and this was a recommendation of the philanthropic strategic plan helped lead to that. So I don't have a pithy, simple answer for you. I think it's just we need to keep the conversation going and keep moving forward.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, and thank you all for a very good presentation, good information. It was interesting that the superintendent and I, or I was talking to superintendent and saying, wouldn't it be nice if we had one of those Minute Clinics in this building? I go to that all the time, you know, and so, listening to what you all say, Minute Clinic. In regard to the Winter Park Health Foundation, your chart that showed the cost of what your organization provides, you also said there was some cost from the schools. And I wanted just to have a little bit more of an idea, is that from their regular budgets, or they're not doing any fundraising, right? Is that, and let me, let me say, Ms. Gould and I met when I was Orange County Council PTA president, and she was part of the Winter Park Health Foundation School Nurse Program. And there was, and continues to be, some concern that PTAs were, you're right, I'm choosing my my words because I'm sitting next to you.
Yeah, because I was on the opposite end.
Yeah, that they often feel, they often feel, for lack of a better word, I'm not as articulate as some of my others, but they're feeling pressured to give thousands of dollars from their fundraising. And, you know, they can, they can give all they want, but it was coming almost down as an edict from their principles that they had to give this amount. And so this was, how many years ago, 15 or so years ago? But that's not their mission to provide funding for employees and it's also not, you know, their budgets go up and down, so it's, if we go into this, we need to have really solid recurring funds. I disagree with my wonderful colleague here, is that I don't think PTAs or parent groups should be looked upon to do fundraising for these positions. And what I would hope is that we could go forward with some of these other partnerships with our community-based businesses or healthcare providers so that we can really solidify recurring funds. Right now, I thought the idea with working with UCF or even at some of our other colleges sounds like it has great potential. And I'd also urge us to go ahead and really look within the next 30 days or whatever, let's start that three-year pilot, let's just jump into it and do it. And I agree, I think it's very complicated. I mean, you know, I had some surgery recently and I'm still looking over all the billing, so I don't even profess to think I can tell you how we can make more money. But those are the two things I wanted to say is, I don't support anything that puts responsibility on the parent groups, these little 501(c), PTAs and PTA those, but I do say, let's really get going and start that three-year pilot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Ms. Cadel.
Well, all of my questions have been asked by my fellow board members. There's something to be said for going next to the last. But, you know, I sit here and I listen because back in the late 90s when, before we had all this school-coordinated nurse initiative and stuff and before we were really collecting data and the only way they could keep up with their original start was to collect data. And there was a big fight over BMI. The parents did not want us weighing their children, measuring their BMI. There was a big fight over whether or not we could provide fresh fruit in the cafeteria versus the little canned things with the heavy syrup on it. And so when I listen to how far we've come and I listen to the partnerships there are and the things we're talking about now, and I mean, this is, this has changed in like 15 to 16 years. I mean, because it was, the Winter Park Health Foundation was pushing the envelope about faster than I could keep up with them in the late 90s. Deb and I had many conversations about, you want to do what? Really? And so it's encouraging to me that we have moved to a place where school health wellness, the data that shows we're sending them back into class, the achievement data, you know, and I think we're on, I think we're on the right track. The talking about we need to figure out how to have a healthcare district, you know, I don't know if that goes to a citizens' initiative. I, you know, I think they've changed how things become a citizens' initiative, but this community has shown over and over again that the future of the community depends a lot on how we treat our children in the schools with the one mil and with the half penny. So, you know, maybe at some point pulling all of our healthcare people together, which Cigna was at the table when we had that first meeting on all of this. And, you know, I, I know it seems hard, I know it seems slow, I know we probably wonder if we're making any progress, but I'm encouraged by what I've seen. I'm encouraged by the partnerships with all the different health groups out here and as some of our principals move into other positions, and I had a principal say, there is no place for the children in the Christmas Bethlow, that East River High School area. They, they have children who have no teeth, that there is no place to send them. They're sending children home because there's no healthcare out there. And the principal said, Joey, what can we do to get some kind of clinic or, you know, what can we get out there? The Telomed is really exciting. You guys have heard my story of Telomed. I wasn't sick enough the first time I used Telomed. But the second time I used Telomed, I was sick enough that I did get some medicine to get rid of that terrible cold and cough that I had. So I think that's exciting. So I just want to say thank you to all of you that have been out here, for all of you who've been the yeomans, who have been doing this work and pushing the envelope and saying that this is important and all of the work on this, on that coordinated school wellness and it's just exciting to see where it's come. I know there's a lot of work to do to, so to all of you, thank you.
That's a great way to close it out and I've got a few comments, but I want to thank our partners again. I know I keep saying that, but listen, I'm aware that attending these meetings is like watching paint dry, especially to all your experts in the field and you're listening to a bunch of ranking amateurs up here talk about some of your experts on, so, and listening very patiently. So thank you for sitting through a very lengthy two, two and a half hour meeting. It's really appreciated. Couple points I'd like to make very quickly. First of all, that conversation about a children's tax is ongoing. It's been going on for five or six years. Those who have been leading that effort have been very respective of us and have backed down a number of times because of various ballot initiatives we've had on the ballot, whether it's on sales tax or the millage. But I think eventually that is going to happen. And we are living in increasingly a progressive community in every sense of the word and I think it's going to pass when it happens. So I'd like to, you know, put a marker out there just in case I'm not around when it does get on the ballot. I think that we need to make sure that we are advocating if and when that ever does get put on the ballot for school-based health services to be part of the use of that tax because I think it, that's part of the use of that tax in Broward and in Palm. And I think it really, if you want to do overall good for our community's children, I think, can think of no better access point than school-based health services. Question for you, Dr. Cartwright, and maybe you can tell me later, but we've made great strides in our Medicaid reimbursements and I look at the Hillsborough County model where, just looking at the one slide at 35, that they have 103 RNs and 145 LPNs. And, you know, I know this is just brief summary, but aggressive Medicaid billing has allowed them to do that. So my question is, are we able to gradually see a return on that increased Medicaid reimbursements rates that we're getting and can we plow that money back into hiring more LPNs and more RNs? Because I'm hoping that's what we're using that money for as we increase our reimbursement rates. Again, I know these are complex issues, so if there's a complexity beyond that, it's not that simplistic. Please educate me after the meeting, but I'd like to know, are we able to use that increase that we're getting to hire more? As far as the recommendations go, just, and I'll wrap up here, I'd love to see us have a serious conversation with some of our partners and maybe even within our budget or maybe even with our increased effort on our philanthropic plan from our employee funding as we go forward and I'm hoping we start to see progress there on the recommendation to hire someone responsible solely for implementing next steps because I agree with the assessments. I think that's critical. All of our people have so much on their plate and it's just going to get lost in the mix if we just add one more thing to do. I'd love to see us find a way to increase our number of lead RNs. You know, our learning communities are larger than probably 95% of the school districts in America and that's literal, that's not figurative literal. You know, we have a, we're the 10th largest district in America, ninth largest, I think now, we have 180, what are we, up to 189 traditional schools? So, you know, five learning communities, if you all can do the math, that's almost 40 schools per learning community, that's bigger than most school districts in America, almost every school district in America. I love this recommendation for funding for a three-year pilot program to increase staffing of our nurse practitioners and I really hope that's something at the top of the list when we assemble our partners because most of the partners have philanthropic arms as well and I can think of no better use for the funding than to embark upon such a pilot program. I also love the recommendation, work with area hospitals to evaluate how school health services will reduce their ER admits and their ER services and to start getting, if they're allowed to under HIPAA, I don't know why we would not be allowed to, but start gathering homeschool information when children come into your ERs. I think that would be incredibly illustrative if that's not being gathered already, just to find out really what schools are primary givers to the system. And that will allow us also to target really our nursing programs to those, to those schools. I think we need a seat at Pecan, a little surprised we don't have one, but I think that OCPS needs a seat there. Last thing I'm going to say is I'd love to see, and this, well, this was a main subject of conversation last time we met, almost two years ago now, but one of, one of the evolutions that our conversations took and really Rich Morrison, you know, sort of initiated this, is to see our schools become an access point, especially for our uninsured children into our other healthcare systems. And I don't know if they're, that's being done now, but my gut tells me it's probably not and my gut tells me there's probably, if they're well-trained, and I think it's going to take training as to what's out there in terms of services and providers and ability providers, for our, whether it's our LPNs, RNs, or SHAs to become, for lack of a better word, traffic cops into the healthcare systems that we have in this county for uninsured populations. And along those lines, and this is a heavy lift and I know it, I've not heard this said, but I, I've never, and I think other jurisdictions are doing this, but I'd love to see our school-site-based healthcare providers, and I don't know if they have time with all that they have to do, but we need to figure out a way to allow them to become a primary enroller of uninsured children into Medicaid. You know, I'm a trial lawyer by trade, that's what I do in my day job and I get a lot of children clients and it just never sees this to amaze me how many high poverty clients I have whose kids are not enrolled in Medicaid. And they go to the hospital, some catastrophic that's happened to them and I just, you'd be amazed. And it's, you know, their parents, a lot of times in fairness, they love their kids just as much as I love mine, but they don't know how to do it, they don't know any better, they don't get them enrolled. And then that becomes for the hospitals, you know, uninsured patient that they end up ultimately writing off, because I'm not sure, but I don't think once they arrive at your doorstep, you can enroll them in Medicaid and try to get reimbursement. I think it's, because I've tried to go that route before and not succeeded. So I've always thought that our school-site-based healthcare providers, or somehow, we need to figure out a way to use that for enrollment into Medicaid. And the other heavy lift, and I know I'm throwing a lot out there on the wall, but the other heavy lift is, and other school systems have struggled with this, and I don't know of any examples where they've succeeded, and that's how do you do greater billing of private health insurance? You know, my kids, we have, thanks to OCPS, we have good health insurance, okay? My kids, I have three children, gone through public school. You know, you heard those stats earlier and I was thinking, gosh, that's an awful lot. Then I thought, well, not when you really think about it, Bill, because your own three children, if collectively probably go to the school nurse five to six times per year for something, you know, whether it's an allergic reaction, my daughter has a peanut allergy, whether it's, you know, whatever. You know, so the parent whose kid breaks an arm on the playground, a kid who, you know, I, so I don't know, I know that's always talked about, way back, way back 20 years ago when I was in the legislature, it used to be talked about how schools can do a better job of billing private insurance. I think it's hard. I think it takes billing specialists, coding specialists, there's a reason that's a whole occupation nowadays, coders. And I think it takes staffing to do that. But I do think it's a fertile source for exploration of reimbursement to OCPS if we could figure out a way to separate them out and make it so they're eligible providers for private health insurance, which was really your point, Ms. Moore, so I want to give you kudos on bringing that up. So those are my thoughts. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn over to you, see if you want to close with anything, but thank you all for bringing this excellent report to us. Anything else, Dr. Jenkins?
We are informed by your discussion. We will certainly continue to work and bring you more information as we have it available. On another note, I was asked to inform the board, although it stopped now, that thumping noise you heard is the, that's the I-4 construction going on, which means they're pounding one of those large stakes in our vicinity.
Thought it was at a Black Sabbath concert.
And secondly, if you hadn't heard, someone mentioned Marge LaBard, I think Ms. Gordon mentioned her, she did pass away this week and if you saw, such the sweetest thing, she said, instead of flowers, they've asked for anyone interested to make donations to the new PS8 in the downtown area. And so that was certainly worth noting as well. And then lastly, if you haven't seen your calendars, it was put on your calendars a few days ago and then you got the reminder, we will have CTA leadership here for Thanksgiving luncheon on Monday at noon, so I hope you can be here, Cafe A.
So we're not going, I'm going to keep talking, but y'all, thank you for coming. We need to talk about something as mundane as seating assignments real quick, so feel free to walk out on us. You've definitely earned your overtime pay, which I doubt you got for coming tonight, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, y'all, I know it's late, so I know you want to get out of here too, but I need to get this done by the next meeting. So let me just go down the road by seniority and ask you, do you prefer to stay where you're at? Do you want me to move you? Mrs. Gordon, excuse me, you want to stay? I'm thrilled you're staying, thank you. Ms. Cadel?
I'm fine with Pam.
Okay, Ms. Flynn?
No, I'm staying, I'm staying, I'm staying, I just, I'm staying.
Okay.
I just.
Ms. Moore, I thought of you today, you're sort of at the end there. You want to stay, you want to move?
I just thought it was great because they said I was looking at you all much better from here.
Okay, you're happy to stay? Okay. Mrs. Robinson, you have to move, so I know you're moving, okay?
You know what? Just for the sake of fun, I'm going to bump Pam, just because I can.
Okay.
Pam, where are you going? Looks like you're going to Linda's chair.
So that makes it simple, Pam, you're going to Linda's chair, are you, I hope you're okay with that.
I really do not care.
Okay. So you're going to Linda's chair and then Linda, you have to move. Okay, you have to move. All right, thank you all for being so wonderful about that. Joseph, did you get that? So you got that? So Mrs. Gould is going to Ms. Cobert's chair, Mrs. Robinson going to go. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.